...have been passed out earlier this evening. One is regarding our DTE contract. The other one is regarding the bike race, or proposed bike race. And then the other document I'm not as familiar with. Mr. Campbell, do you want these added as discussion items at the conclusion of tonight's agenda?
This one?
Looking at this.
Oh, yeah, exactly. It's informational.
Okay.
And then the mayor asked me to give an update at this meeting.
Okay.
So I put that out and then I'll reference that during mine. That is just informational.
Information, okay.
If anybody has any questions, they can certainly ask me about that.
Okay, excellent. All right, then you have agenda in front of you. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda as submitted?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Rhodes, seconded by Mr. Gearbaugh. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. And we also need a motion this evening to excuse the absence of Mayor Driscoll.
Move to excuse.
Moved by Mr. Ivey. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Tahar. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. At this time, I would invite our Downtown Development Director, Mr. Art Trapp, forward to give us a presentation regarding the 2011 Winterfest.
Thank you, sir. I would like to start out by thanking the members of the committee for the Winterfest. We started meeting in May, and we met at least once a month, sometimes twice, trying to put this event together. But I'd like to mention their names. Glenn Law, Carol Osterling, Gary Marquatt, Rick Amori, Shelley Rankin, April Scarlett, Sunshine Lambert, Helen Martin, Terry Seibokoning, Jill Dernan, Jim Roth, and Jeff Dowling. Some of these folks worked really hard, others even worked harder. So it was fun. I also would like to thank the Celine Downtown Merchants, the Scarlett family, the Seibokoning family, and Hartman Insurance, who made cash contributions, all without being asked. They saw a need and they fulfilled it. Our artwork was done by Lindsey Rodham over at the Spotted Dog Winery, and our logo was done by Bill Mangle. In the packet that you have, there are 44 members of the community who participated in the snowman building championship of the free world. And I'd like to say special thanks to the Gearbaugh family for making 120 snowmen in two hours.
Pretty good.
Which is one a minute, which is more than St. Clair did in their two hours with their entire 50 people. So it moved along. I would also like to acknowledge Tom Benson for allowing us to use his building free of charge. Ace Hardware for letting us buy things for free, or not for free, for cost. La Fontaine for the use of their vehicle and their wagon. Celine Area Schools for letting us use some of their accumulated snow, although we really didn't end up using it, it was just a mound. Community Ed provided some equipment for the games, for the kids. And Pat Corfman from Bishop Airport for donating 50 hats that we tried to pass out, but it was hard to wear a hat and do all that stuff at the same time, so that didn't work out. But everybody took a hat home that wanted one, so. And then I'd like to thank City Council for your support, and especially Glenn. We could not have done this without him. I really appreciate it. So where are we at now? This is Frosty. Frosty will be coming to Celine on Friday at noon, somewhat reluctantly from the city of St. Clair. But they're coming and they're giving it up. I have a little quote from St. Clair that says, Frosty will be moving to Celine. Prior to that, they took him on a tour of the city. He said they're looking forward to visiting Celine, as he's sure there's a lot of wonderful people there, but St. Clair will always be his home. Such a diplomat. St. Clair has a mural in their town, and Frosty has visited as many places as he could, had his picture taken, and they're going to use it next year for publicity. We're sure planning to do the same, and I think we're going to utilize Frosty in every way, manner, shape, and form that we can, to make the 2012 event substantially bigger and better than we did for 2011. Are there any questions on Winterfest? We had 486 snowmen built in two hours. I thought we had a great event. Some of the things that we tried to do didn't work out, but a lot of other things did. And again, we'll try to do much better next year as far as everything else we can. We've had a lot of suggestions and comments, many of which we'll take to heart, and some we'll talk about, so.
No questions or comments for Mr. Trapp? Mr. Law? I would be remiss if I didn't thank Art Trapp for all of his hard work. He mentioned a lot of people who put in a lot of effort and work into the Winterfest, but Art took a lot of the legwork and ran with it. And without him, and me sincerely, Art, you would not, we would not have been had a successful Winterfest as we did, barring, of course, the greatness of the weather to come with it. That was always good. But Art, thank you very much for that, and I look forward again to next year. And as Art said, the snowman building competition was great, and a lot of things were about, were really well done. I thought utilizing the ice rink was fantastic with the ice skaters, and it opened up a lot of people to see what the ice rink was, and then actually probably got them out there for the first time to ever see it, and hopefully are still using it, although this warm weather has probably taken that away. So thank you again, Art, and thank the whole community for coming out and supporting it, and City Council. Mr. Rhodes, did you have a comment?
I was also going to compliment Art Trapp and his Winterfest committee with Glenn's able assistance, and it was a great event, had a lot of fun. I was really tired that night, though.
You were tired?
I had not planned on shoveling for two hours, shoveling snow, but it went very well, so, thank you.
Mr. Rhodes became an honorary Gearbaugh at that time.
How did you feel, Dean?
It was a great event.
I thank you for your comments and appreciate it. One of the things that we started doing over the weekend is we're doing a sponsorship for the hanging flower baskets. We're going to purchase 28 additional baskets this year, and what we're seeking is sponsorship for filling those baskets. It's a $75 contribution. If you go to Bceline.com, or there is a Facebook page on B Bloomen. This activity started on Friday. We have 13 already people who have signed up to sponsor a basket. There'll be a little plaque on each of the light poles where your basket is hanging, and we hope to know that we can get 75 people who would volunteer to sponsor a basket. We'll get the flowers started here shortly, and we'll have then 22 light poles decorated come sometime around, I don't know, the end of May, depending upon how we get the flowers growing, and as quickly as we can get it started. So if you're interested, go to Bceline.com or to the Facebook site, which is B Bloomen. So I thank you very much, and thank you.
Good. Thank you so much, Mr. Trapp, for your very thorough presentation regarding Winterfest, and of course, for your leadership in Winterfest. And also, again, special thanks to Mr. Law for being the catalyst of the 2011 Winterfest. Moving on to citizen comments on agenda items. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make comment or question on items that appear on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required, to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any comments?
Good evening, Mary Hess. The Winterfest was neat. I drove by and saw the snowmen. And regarding 11-25, which is the strategy plan, it is a nice brochure, the part of which I would, I didn't know Mr. Begoin wasn't going to be here, but it's maintain financial stability, and it said that you are hoping to narrow municipal employees' retirement system, unfunded employment pension liability gap. And I had heard that's about $11 million. And I wanted to ask Mr. Begoin if that was, in fact, the figure. If it is, we definitely need to look into the retirement area, and as far as funding that and bringing that down, that was, I don't know what the answer is, but as I said, I'd heard 11 million, and that's a lot of money. And I know the mayor did, or stated the city, and was telling, you know, as far as good financial, as far as having 2 million left, but that is something I would hope the council would address in their new budget, as far as trying to get a hold on that.
Thank you, Mrs. Hess. And maybe the city manager can address your concerns when we get to Agenda Item 11-25. Are there any other citizen comments? Moving on then to the consent agenda. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion. However, at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion.
Move to approve as submitted.
Moved by Mr. Rhodes. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gearbaugh. Hearing no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Moving on to unfinished business. Item 11-25, City of Celine's strategic plan for 2011, 2012. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the 2011, 2012 strategic plan, and to approve and adopt, or not adopt, the goals as submitted or amended.
Move to approve and adopt as submitted.
It's been moved by Mr. Ivey. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Rhodes. Mr. Campbell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. Real briefly, first, the, there was a few comment, couple, I believe, two comments made at the last council meeting. One was, I believe it was under be a sustainable city, and there was an extra hash mark there, if you will, and making sure that it wasn't something missed, and I did double check, and it was just, there was not, we didn't miss anything, just an extra hash mark. One that Clerk Hill caught for me, which I appreciated, was on build community spirit and civic engagement. There was no E there, so it was civic engagement, so I was happy to change that. So that was changed. And then also, Mr. Ivey had suggested at the last page, where it said conclusion, something more positive, like moving forward, which I thought was certainly very appropriate, and I believe, I didn't hear any comments negative to that idea. So we went ahead and put in moving forward. So those were the changes. And if I might, very quickly, Mrs. Hess's question about 11, it's actually a little closer to 5 million. It's worth about $2 million to get to 80 percent funded. And then, again, fully funded would be about $5 million.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Are there any questions or comments for the city manager? Mr. Ivey?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Mr. Campbell, I thought you did a good job in the final revision, only, I was looking at this earlier, and I might have one more, maybe two more suggestions before we decide to edge this in stone. Looking at the introduction paragraph, there is a link to the Michigan Municipal League's toolbox and guidelines for the 20th, excuse me, 21st century communities. And I don't think that the link is accessible as it stands. If this, we're in an HTML document, I don't think you can really get to that website unless you put a www in front of it. Would you agree?
I would agree.
Okay. The other thing was minor. We've capitalized all our headings in the document, and the revision on the last paragraph, moving forward, probably should be capitalized as well. Again, thank you. I thought you did a great job with this, and I very much appreciate the effort and work that you put into it.
Thank you. I think, hopefully, hopefully, I think we had a good, positive couple meetings with Mr. Petrak leading those, and I believe that was well received from the comments that I had gotten, so thank you. I'll pass that along.
Mr. Law?
Just a clarification again, that I am not in favor of the sustainability portion of this document, as everyone on council well knows that. So just for the public record, that is, that is one part of which I do not support. However, I am a firm believer of not throwing the baby out with the bathwater kind of thing. While I think, while I disagree with the sustainability, I agree with the rest of the document as, I think, a solid and positive direction. And so, on that basis, I will support this goals with some reluctance.
Thank you, Mr. Law. Any additional questions or comments? Mr. Rhodes?
I'd just like to state that I'm quite pleased with this plan. I believe that the goals that are listed there are much better defined than they might have been in some previous documents, and that we, I believe, have a, have a good chance of reaching those, and certainly being able to measure our progress towards achieving them. Thank you.
Any additional comments? Mr. Gearbaugh?
Just as a new member of council, I'm glad to be able to provide an input into this and some of the changes that we've made this year. I think it will be things that we can attain within the short future. This sets a great plan for the city to move forward and be able to actually encourage and maybe control some of our costs and improve our community as it is. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Gearbaugh. And referring back to Mr. Ivey's comments or suggestion for just a minute, colleagues, I believe that we can adopt his changes without objection.
I believe so.
Very good, okay. I have one quick question for Mr. Campbell. Mr. Campbell, assuming that this document is approved tonight, how will this be accessible to our citizens? Where can they go to, to review this?
Well, we will put it on the website, but remember, this is actually, doesn't take effect until July 1. And we will begin, we've already started working on some of these things, but again, there's always that overlap as we get direction guidance from City Council to start working on our budget. So, but the one that we reviewed last time, the 2010, 2011 goals that are currently in line, we're working through those as well. And we'll probably, most likely, have at least one other update between now and the end of the fiscal year, then to June, you know, where they're at. But we will certainly, we can, we can put them up there, but again, they won't technically officially take effect until July 1.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. And I just want to make sure that our citizens who are in the audience this evening, and who may be watching from home, know that this council, including our mayor, worked very hard on this document, and it is, it is very thorough. And in addition to being thorough, I think all of the goals and objectives that are stated and articulated are achievable. So I'm very pleased with this, and I enthusiastically endorse its adoption this evening. If there are no further comments or questions, I'm going to call, call the question, excuse me. All those in favor of the motion to approve and adopt as submitted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Moving on to new business. Item 11-31, Electrical Vehicle Charging Station Agreement Between DTE and the City. This is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the February 10, 2011 memo, excuse me, from City Manager Campbell, and to approve, to approve or not approve the agreement between DTE and the City of Celine for DTE to provide and install a vehicle charging station at the maximum cost to DTE of $12,500, with the city to be responsible for any overage cost. That DTE will maintain the vehicle charging station until December 2013, at which time the city would be 100 percent responsible for the maintenance of the charger and any other associated equipment. To authorize and not, or to authorize or not to authorize, the mayor and clerk to execute said agreement after review and approval by the city attorney. And if my colleagues will indulge me, I'm going to end the motion there, and then I'll entertain a motion later in the evening to possibly establish a user fee for the charging unit. So is there a motion?
Move to approve and authorize.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Rhodes and seconded by Ms. Tahar. Mr. Campbell, would you like to go over your memorandum?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Marle. We also have Nick Carlson and Molly Lumbercoy, both from DTE here as well, so they'll be for some, some questions, but I'll open this up and introduce it, and then we can follow up from there. I believe it was, it's been since early fall, late summer, somewhere in there. I believe Mayor Driscoll, as well as council member Rhodes, had initiated this, working on, potentially working with DTE to bring charging station, electric vehicle charging station to Celine. And so we met with them, we found a suitable location, should be parking lot number three, which is on the south side of East Henry, near the downtown water tower. There'd be a designated spot there. And so we, then, DTE went back and they're working on the details. Let me back up a little bit. This is actually started from a Department of Energy grant to GM to help promote electric vehicles, and GM and DTE are partnering to administer this grant program. And so DT is working in their service area to help locate some of these charging stations. And so that's where we came in and talked and said, yeah, that would be, you know, I think, a good concept to think about and discuss. So they worked on, on their end for a while with agreement language and agreement language between them and GM, and then also came up with agreement language for, between DT and parties such as the City of Celine. We did, we wrestled back and forth a little bit on some, some language. As you saw in my memo, or in my memo, as well as in my communique, talked about, continue to work with them, because there was, there was, and I say, I stress was, there was an item in their formerly proposed agreement language with the city that basically said the city had to indemnify them against any liability, but they would not indemnify the city. And as I told them, and the city attorney Grossman and I both concur, not been involved, typically it's either, either the other party either indemnifies the city, and then the city reciprocally indemnifies them, or at the very minimum, nobody indemnifies either one. But certainly, for us to have to indemnify them, but them not reciprocate, that was certainly cause for pause. So we discussed, they worked, they were very diligent, and we sort of appreciate that. They came back this morning and said, they'd come back with agreed on language present that says that we don't have to indemnify them, they won't indemnify us. So while not perfect, much better, much more palatable, and so I can certainly say I don't have reservations, like the former language in my memo, as it says that I had, as well as city attorney Grossman. So, so that's very positive, and we appreciate that. Couple other things, as it was, as was read in the motion, again, this is $12,500 per project maximum. Anything above that, the city would be responsible for. We would have, once they get estimates, and I'll let Nick address that in a little bit in a little more detail, but, but once they get closer with some estimates as far as, because they'll contract with Electrician to come and hook it up and that type of thing, so there's, there's the hookup fees, the installation fee, as well as the equipment. And so as long as that's not over 12.5, then there will be no cost to city. In addition to that, the intent, now it's not in the language, but the intent is, as I, I believe I put it in my memo, if one project, say Project A only costs 9,000, and Project B costs 14.5, they would take, on a first come, first served basis, they would take the, the intent would be, they would take the cost savings from A and apply it towards B. So potentially, it would, even though it was over 12.5, there may not be an additional, but they can't guarantee that, just because, one, it's on a first come, first served basis. But the city, if they come back, depending on what equipment is agreed upon, and the installation costs, they'll come back with an estimate, say it's going to cost X. If that's more than 12.5, then the city would have 20 days to make a decision of, yes, we will, we'll take the chance that we'll have to pay for that additional, or not. So having said that, just a couple of quick details, because I'm going to leave the technical stuff up to Nick, because this is a little bit out of my league, but, but I have been educated by DT, so I sort of appreciate that. But essentially, we're looking at realistically three vehicles that would use these in the near future. One, of course, is the Chevy Volt, the other is the Ford Focus, and the Nissan Leaf. The Focus and the Leaf, I don't know if I'm wrong, Nick, but probably late 2011, early 2012, projected to be on the market. And I won't get into a lot of the things, but essentially, it's going to, for, for a full charge, which a lot of times you're going to see probably people just topping off, and that type of thing, but for a full charge, it would be approximately a dollar for the Volt, and $2 each for the Leaf and the Focus, for instance, cost. And the way this is set up is that DTE is, they'll also be, it's kind of, I mean, it's a test for them as well, and they'll be collecting data through 2013, December 2013. At that point, it would be turned over, ownership would be turned over to the city. And they're estimating, again, because this is a new technology, they're estimating 10 to 15 years, they believe, that the, that the, that the equipment would last, barring any major damage or vandalism and that type of thing. The, I gave you two scenarios, which were extremely conservative, and they probably wouldn't happen, as I noted in there, but I wanted to give the city council a full picture of what could, what the maximum cost could be, based on the electric rate, in that if we had 12 hours' worth of charging, seven days a week for one charger would be approximately $1,600. And if we had 124 hours a day, seven days a week, would be $3,200. Again, I won't say it won't ever, but very rare would it even happen, but that would be kind of the largest liability that you're looking at. Trying to think if I'm missing anything else. And I know, Nick, you have some questions as well to answer, from, from council member Tahar had forwarded some questions to me, and I forwarded them to DTE, and I know they've got some answers for you as well. But having, before Nick takes, if there's anything I can answer, or if anybody has any questions or comments from me?
Any questions or comments for Mr. Campbell? Ms. Tahar?
Just to clarify, the, the figures you gave for costs were annual costs, right?
Correct, yes, ma'am, thank you. Yes, yes, annual cost. The 1,600 and the 3,200 were annual costs, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions, comments for Mr. Campbell, regarding his report or memorandum? Okay, hearing that, we'll entertain our friends from DTE. Welcome.
Thank you. On behalf of DTE Energy, we're looking to partner with, with some communities around southeastern Michigan, and the interest actually came to us in that Mr. Rhodes and Gretchen Driscoll and city manager, Mr. Campbell, brought in an interest in this project. And so we were able to bring in our marketing and engineering folks to sit down and explore the possibility. Timing was great, because we actually had this pilot program underway. And so here we are, now rolled forward, I think, a couple of months after discussion and inspiration, and ready to share with you a potential contract. And I'll let Nick talk a little bit about some of the questions I think that you had, and we'll see if we can address those, and then any others that you might have.
Great, thank you.
Good evening, council. I'm Nick Carlson, I'm a senior project engineer at Detroit Edison. This is actually perfect timing, I think today was the first Volt left a dealership in Michigan, so it's, it's absolutely perfect timing. So I have a few questions that were proposed to me, and I'll do my best to answer them, and if there's more questions that come up, feel free to ask. The first question is what type of charging station that will be chosen or recommended? The thought behind that is that the charging stations, or the EVSE electric vehicle supply equipment, will have to be tested and certified by an independent laboratory, for example, UL, the Underwriters Laboratory, and that's so we can adhere to National Electric Code 625. So that'll be, that'll be one requirement that'll be made of the charging station. The thought, since a lot of these charging stations are all over the map as far as pricing, I mean, some are on the low end of, you know, $5, $600 to the high end of $5,000, I thought we would go through, and again, this is assuming that we're, we come to an agreement on the terms and conditions. terms and conditions, the thought was that we would, we would get a quote from a competitive bid on the installation cost, and then share that with, with the city council, or city manager, and see what kind of room we have for the equipment, and then we could make a decision based on adhering to the National Electric Code and how much money we have available for the equipment. The second question I have here is, in checking locations of charging stations around the state, it looks like they're developing EV infrastructure along the I-96 corridor, and has there been anything mentioned about doing a similar type of thing on the US-2, or US-12 corridor? I've got a new piece, so US-2's a little further north than, than here. About a year ago, we met with the Southwest Michigan Planning Commission, they're on the west, the west side of the state, and they were promoting an idea of making the US-12 Heritage Trail electric vehicle friendly. And we had some initial discussions, and it's been quiet since, I haven't heard anything in a year. I don't have the lady's contact information, but if that's something that you would like to follow up with, maybe I could get you in contact with her and see if, if there's any progress being made there. But as far as I know, it's, it's been quiet for about a year.
We do know there is interest locally, and there's also interest in the Ann Arbor area, a close adjacent community to you.
And then there was a question about the installation, and whether it's going to be overhead or underground, and then if, if we could build it, so it would be, have the capability for future expansion. So this, this installation will be underground, it'll be coming from a transformer that feeds the city, it'll be, I don't know if it'll be directional bar, or the electricians will figure that out. As far as building it for future expansion, this is, funding is coming from Detroit Edison and the Department of Energy. So we can't spend money on equipment that's not going to be used, but items like conduit, I mean, I think that, we'll see what the cost come in on the bids, but it's possible that maybe we can do a conduit size that can handle, you know, two conductors versus one. So the incremental cost there is relatively small. I understand, if you had to dig it up and bring more conduit, then you're going to double the cost for the next time you do your installation, so. Next question is, how would the separate meter data be used? And this, the separate meter isn't a billing meter, it's just for data collection to understand charging behavior, different charging profiles of different vehicles. And it's, one of the requirements for the, for the general waters and the Department of Energy have given us is, you know, we have to report all the data on how these, these charging stations are being used across our service territory. So it's definitely something that we would share with the city, and hopefully, it's something, that way you guys can, can look at, you know, how much energy is actually being used, and then you can quantify some of the costs, and if there's something that you want, you want to charge a fee, or something, you can, you know, have an educated guess on, on what type of energy use is going to be on an annual basis. The next question is, what type of rate would the city be charged for electricity used at this charging station? And it was, the question was kind of asked about, is it going to be a similar rate to the time of use rate that we have for electric vehicles for residential customers? And on this, in this instance, it wouldn't be a residential time of use rate, it would most likely be whatever commercial rate that the city is currently on, and you're probably best served to ask the account representative to tell you what the current rate you're on is. The next question is, if the city assessed a fee for use of the station, why would the city be prohibited from charging per kilowatt hour? And I believe it's a Michigan Public Service Commission rule, that it only allows energy wholesalers, such as utilities, to sell electricity on a kilowatt hour basis. So you'd have to probably sell it by, on a time basis. If the city assessed a fee for the use of the station, what would be anticipated as a cost in city staff time to manage? And that's another question that will have to be answered when we, when we work on what EVSE equipment that we install, because a lot of these charging stations, some of them have management services, and it's, you know, have communications that monitor the charging, and they can do the billing for you. You may have to pay a monthly fee to, for them to do it, to perform the services for you, and then they would send you a check for the charging, you know, the charging or usage at the, at the EVSE. So that's something I think that we'd have to answer at a later date. And there is some EVSEs that are coming into market that have a credit card swipe, which may be an option too.
Those were some of the questions that you had shared with us earlier.
Great.
Thank you.
Additional questions for our representatives from DTE? Mr. Ivey?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Nick, you're an engineer, and Molly, you're a public affairs person, and I wanted to clarify first, that the funding, Nick, you said, is coming from the DTE and the Department of Energy. Is it not true that the funding is, in some degree, provided by the American Reinvestment and Recovery Act?
That is correct.
That is correct, okay. Nick, there's some, it seems to me, confusion or uncertainty about the equipment that would be employed at a charging station, if we were to do this in Celine. Could you tell me whether the equipment would be classified as Level 2 or Level 3? Are you familiar with those terms?
Yes, I am. It would be Level 2 charging, just 240 volt charging stations. Some of them, some of them are, have both Level 1 and Level 2 functions, so 120 volts and 240 volts, but it definitely wouldn't be Level 3. It may be only Level 2, but it may be Level 2 and Level 1, depending on which technology you choose.
Nick, let me ask you this. The equipment, you say, is your responsibility until 2013, and then at that time, the city would take the responsibility for the maintenance of the equipment, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Do you not think that in three to five years, that equipment will be obsolete, given the quantum leap forward that this electric vehicle project will take? Honestly?
It's hard, it's hard to say. I don't know what electric vehicles are going to look like in two or three years, so I really can't answer that question, but if they're, assuming they're, they're accepting AC, Level 2, 240 volt power, that, that it shouldn't, it shouldn't be a problem. I think the, the equipment, it's, it's, I mean, it's just, it's just a power source, and with, with significant safety features on it, and I don't think that it would be obsolete in two to three years. But I don't know what the plans are for the, that the automakers have either, so.
Well, Mayor Protem, I would like to address some of my concerns. I have no further questions. If others do, then I would like to have the floor again, if that's...
I will be happy to call on you, Mr. Ivey. At this time, we'll entertain more questions for our representatives from DTE, however. Mr. Rhodes, you have some comments, questions?
One question and a couple moments. I had thought in our earlier discussions, that the charging station had already been selected. I was a bit surprised to hear the comment that you're going out to solicit bids for that.
Solicit bids for the installation of the equipment.
Oh, okay. But the charging station itself?
Charging station, that hasn't been selected either. That's something that's readily available, and I think we would like to work with the city. I mean, we could either, we could either choose the equipment for you, or we could work with you to find EVSE that best suits what you need.
So it might turn out to be a combination of criteria of the charging station, and then the cost of the installation, and some trade-offs there to keep the cost down with, so that the city doesn't have to pay anything more.
Exactly.
Exactly.
It might work out that way.
And you would play a decision-making role in that process.
Yeah, okay. And I'd like to support the, speak in support of this particular agreement. It is true that we don't, any of us know exactly what form electric vehicles are going to take in the future, and it may well be that at some point in time, this piece of equipment has to get changed out, another piece put in. But, you know, I think that electric vehicles, in one way or another, are going to be with us for a long time, and perhaps in an increasing amount, particularly as the price of gasoline continues to escalate. And I just think it's the right thing to do. We need to be conscious of our, of our impact on this planet that we're on, and whatever little steps we can take to, to help that, I think are worthwhile doing.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Any other questions for our representatives from DTE? Mr. Long, no question?
No.
Okay. Any questions for DTE?
Just could you address some more of the safety concern? That's just the issue that potentially, you know, it'll be in a neighborhood where kids and things will be around, just how is that affected? Is GFI, or however it's, should somebody start messing with it, or whatever?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, it'll, it'll have to meet National Electric Code, Article 625, for the installation. There'll be proper circuit protection, in a circuit breaker form, and then the equipment itself has ground fault circuit interrupters, the GFCI, and it also, there's safety features within the, it's a SAE J1772, it's a standard North American connector that goes into the vehicle, and that has a communication pilot pin inside of it, when it connects to the car. It's not energized until it connects to the car, and it does a handshake first, so there's significant safety features in both the equipment, as well as from the electrical side, in the installation, it'll be, we have to meet Electric Code, so there's redundancy there.
People have asked that kind of question, just want to know what kind of things are there, so, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Gearbo. Any other questions for our guests? Well, thank you both.
Thank you.
Moving on to discussion, Mr. Ivey.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I would like to have my fellow council members listen for a few minutes. I do have some concerns regarding this issue, and I want to share them with you in making our decision tonight. First of all, I can't support this project, chiefly because I see too many problems with the business model. I don't think that it's the right business model. I think that there needs to be a privatized service, a company that specializes in installation and maintenance of this kind of equipment, that would maintain the charging stations, and that would partner with businesses. I think the right business model would be similar to what Redbox does. You're familiar with Redbox, they have DVDs, and they would partner with Walmart. The Redbox is there, where people are, it's convenient for them to use it. Convenience is a very important factor. Charging stations should be located where the consumers are already accustomed to driving, where they already park their car temporarily, not on some backstreet parking lot. I think electronic vehicle drivers, they want to get their fill of electrons, and pick up their groceries, and have their coffee, and be on their way. They're not going to put up with a wait of a Level 2 station. A Level 2 station means you wait for your vehicle to be recharged. If we were going to do this, we would need Level 3, because those have the capacity to recharge a vehicle in a half an hour or less. The equipment, as I mentioned before, when I asked Nick about it, in four or five years, it's obsolete, and the city is stuck with it. This is a time when we're looking at our core services. What should the city be providing as core services? I don't think becoming a retailer of electricity is a service that our citizens want us to become engaged in. I read that 70% of electronic vehicle, or electric vehicle owners are going to end up charging their vehicles at home, anyway. And the location, again, I think to other cities that are doing this, Chicago, for example, Austin, Texas, for example, there is a strategy where these are being located on major thoroughfares, interstates, major highways, and that's the best way to do it. Not in downtowns, not, not on side streets. For these reasons, I ask my colleagues not to support this motion this evening, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Ivey. Mr. Carlson, do you want to briefly comment towards Mr. Ivey's comments and perspective, but I do want to keep it brief, because I want to make sure all of our council members have an opportunity to engage in this debate and discussion?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to make one clarification on Level 2 charging for a vehicle like a Chevrolet Volt, that's charging, assuming that the battery is depleted, 100% depleted, it would be three to four hours to charge that vehicle. There is not a vehicle, well, the vehicles that we talked about, the Nissan Leaf, the Ford Focus, and the Chevrolet Volt, none of them can handle Level 3 charging at this time. The Generation 1 vehicles cannot handle Level 3. So Level 2 is as fast as that there is there, and I just wanted to make that clarification with you, so when you're making your decision.
Very good. Thank you for that information. Mr. Long?
Well, Mr. Ivey spoke to many of my concerns, and addressed much of what I probably would say. Obviously, I'll be voting against this as well, for the very reason that Mr. Ivey pointed out, and I'll point out again, the city should not be in the business of providing such a service that the private sector can easily do, or should at least, we should investigate that. Also a part of the fact that federal funds are being used for this, government as a rule should not be involved, in my opinion anyways, with this kind of service, and it should be entrepreneurial-driven, privately-driven, and not on the taxpayers to fund it. As Mr. Ivey pointed out, while our friends at DTE are sure as that this station can outlive, or at least continue to work for 10, 15 years, technology, we don't know where it's going with, with these vehicles, we don't know where it's going with these charging stations, and that is a very, very unanswered question, and it's very open-ended, and we have no idea how that's going to play out. Just because a Volt goes onto the streets of Michigan for the first time today, I don't think really justifies us, as a city, as representatives of the taxpayers, to climb on board all of a sudden, and put money into something that is not proven. People can say that they're going to drive electric cars, and that's good. That's all for them. I don't see the combustible engine going anywhere, anytime fast. Now, whether gas prices drive that out of the market, we'll wait and see. But I'll end my comments by saying, I will wholeheartedly vote against this measure.
Thank you, Mr. Long. Are there any additional comments by council members? Mr. Gearbo?
One of the things that I've looked at this, is being a potential stopgap, just from the potential that I do believe private industry will kick in if they actually are going to do this. I mean, that question I would have for you is, are there any potential vendors or industries out there that are potentially doing this already, wanting to negotiate?
I was just going to mention that, and I'll invite Nick to pick up with me. There's other communities that are actually looking at this, and have already implemented. Dearborn, give me the others.
Northville.
Northville.
Wayne County.
Wayne County Airport. Ann Arbor's looking at it. So there's other communities around southeastern Michigan that are looking at this, and, you know, it can be seen as an economic development tool for the downtown. When you say, you know, three hours, it might cause the person to stop, go use the downtown restaurants or businesses while they're waiting to have their vehicle charged, and then, you know, move on their way to the next community, or to work, or what have you, that they're going to. So it can be an economic development tool, promote the downtown industry, you know, I'm not only with DTE Energy, but I live in Celine. So I saw this as a great progressive opportunity for the community to step up, and be amongst those progressive communities in southeastern Michigan, that were looking to take advantage of an opportunity. Again, this is $12,500, that, you know, through the grant program, you know, we came to you after you had requested of us interest in the program. So it's an opportunity that's available now, may not be available, you know, in the next year or so, so, you know, and again, we believe that the charging station technology will be good technology beyond the five years. And again, you can set together, based on your data collection, a fee process to make sure that you're covered. sure that you're covered on that aspect. So, again, I mean, this is an opportunity at no charge to the city, to take advantage of a progressive economic development event for the community in the downtown.
And I'd also like to add that we're going to be gathering data, collecting data, and sharing that information with you, so there's a research piece and a demonstration piece of this project. I mean, we can't sit up and guarantee that this is going to be a complete success with electric transportation, but you have an opportunity here to be part of its success, or help promote that with, you get to understand the charging behavior of your residents, as well as you can, you know, the installation of equipment, and, you know, for relatively free cost.
Thank you. Mr. Gearbock, did you have anything further?
The other concern I had, a question I was, based on the location, what was the determination factor for putting it over on Henry Street? Was that, if you could discuss that a little bit more, making Mr. Ivey's comment about his concern?
Excuse me, and Mr. Rhodes, it's been a while since we did that walk-around, but part of it was dependent upon the popularity of a parking lot, and as far as customer-driven and business-driven, meaning there was potential concern if we took away in some of the more used parking spaces. You know, every parking space is worth X amount of dollars to business owners. So, we talked about, you know, what would be better location, and that's what we came up with. In addition to power source, that was also a factor, but those were, I think, the two main items when we went around and looked, as far as accessibility, and as, just to, I did forgot to mention, there are some requirements that we would have to put up some signage to let people know where that was located. But, and also, I believe, I think there's, I have not been to it, but I believe there's a website that shows locations of these charging stations, so people that are, have been using the electric vehicles, they can, if you will, plan a trip, if you will, or if they're going from A to B, if it's longer than the life of that battery. But, right now, of course, we have the hybrids, but once those pure electric vehicles come online, that certainly would be more important. But, those are a couple of the main reasons why we chose Parking Lot 3, because it was accessible, it was reasonable distance, certainly from the downtown, it is municipal parking lot, but we thought we had concerns that the Parking Lot Number 2, which was behind Coal America Max, that area, that's a very popular one, and if we had to, there's concern there that if we did away with the parking space, that might cause some concern. Same as Parking Lot 1, behind the Chamber, and that type of thing over there. So, and then, of course, then, for, the one by Little Caesar's there, of course, that has our, the festival, mostly festivals and that type of thing.
Just my concern is being that, is this is as an EDA, or a type of a promotional type of project, that having it being more visible and that type of thing would be an encouragement on it, but I can understand where you've come up with that location. Because I do know if it takes three or four hours for somebody wants to take up a space like that, it does violate some of our parking initiatives. But, I believe we're going to have to address that separately anyways, because you're only supposed to park here if it is an electric vehicle, correct?
Correct. That would be correct. That would be right. Reserved for that.
Anything else, Mr. Gearbock?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Tarr?
First question of clarification, the three-hour charging time, I think we're assuming that once you plug in, you have to stay for the entire three hours, but as I understand it, that's not necessarily true. You can plug in and charge for as long as you want to, and unplug and drag away, right? Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. You don't have to be there for three hours.
Right. So, just bopping in, and somewhere, having a cup of coffee, and topping off a charge, or just adding the charge for a half an hour is perfectly safe, and part of the way these are designed?
Right.
Okay, thank you. Could I also say that I do support this project, and I just want to add, having just attended the automobile show in Detroit last month, the three vehicles mentioned are certainly candidates for using a charging station, but that's not the entire population of vehicles currently even out there that might use such a station. Ford Transit Connect currently comes in a full-electric version that I think is, I think possibly even being sold to Brownwood Ford, I'm not sure. There are existing older electric vehicles, antiques from the turn of the century, the turn of the 20th century, that is. There's also a 1916 Detroit electric vehicle that lives in Ann Arbor, and drives on streets, and was present, Mr. Rhodes may recall, at the dedication of the library parking lot not too long ago. And there are also a number of people who have either converted vehicles to full-electric, or have converted hybrid vehicles to plug-in, who would also potentially use this station. And I'm aware of interest on the port of the Michigan chapter, the Electric Automobile Association, in knowing about and possibly utilizing a station that would be located in Saline, so I will be supporting this project.
Thank you, Ms. Tarr. Is there anything else? Mr. Rhodes?
I have not been in communication with Mayor Driscoll recently on this particular item, but I remember when it first came up, she was very enthusiastic about the possibility of having one or more of these charging stations within a community, and I'm assuming that she still would be. One of the goals that we just passed this evening had to do with being a sustainable city, and I think this is an opportunity for the city of Saline to take a leadership position, and to be proactive rather than reactive, and I strongly support this particular motion.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Is there anything else? I would just say for the record, that with some degree of reluctance, I will support this motion. I would echo comments made by my colleagues, Mr. Ivey and Mr. Long, that I do not believe it is the core function of government to provide this sort of amenity or service. However, as a stopgap, I think it's important that we provide those citizens within our community and outside of our community with the option of being able to charge their cars in Saline. And I do believe it is an economic development tool. But again, going forward, I don't believe that it's the obligation or responsibility of the city of Saline in perpetuity to provide this sort of service. I would throw out for discussion tonight relating to user fees. I do feel strongly that there should be some nominal user fee, and I know there's those out there who may accuse me of being penny wise and a pound foolish, but it's not about the money, it's a principle, and I think this is more than just providing people with a parking space, it's really a parking space combined with fueling. So, I think that a user fee would be appropriate. I know that's not part of this motion, but because we do need to determine, figure if we want to adopt a user fee, again, I throw that out for discussion this evening. Mr. Long?
Why, well, okay. I already said what I said about having taxpayers having to fund this anyway. Now, we're asking them, for the users who are assuming taxpayers of the city of Saline, to also pay for charging it. So, we're, if you will, almost double-dipping into the taxpayer's pocket. Maybe I'm seeing this in a different way, I don't know, maybe I'm way off-base in my thinking on this, but, well, Mayor Protam, I will not speak on this motion until the other one's been voted on, so, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Long. Any other discussion relating to this original initial motion? Excuse me. Ms. Tarr?
Did we want to have any discussion, Mr. Mayor Protam, about the city being responsible for overage cost, and any guidance for the further development of the, if this is passed?
We can certainly discuss that at this time, that would be very appropriate.
I would like to suggest, then, that we express a preference for no additional costs to the city.
Would you like to, I apologize, Ms. Tarr, do you want to amend the motion?
Well, I believe it's in the language of the agreement that DTE will present costs, and then the city has a chance to respond to them. So, my suggestion would be, at that time, that Mayor Driscoll and City Manager Campbell would know that the council was not necessarily in favor of additional costs.
Very good. Mr. Campbell, do you want to comment to Ms. Tarr's suggestion or comments?
Sure, I guess I might, if this were to go forward, we would be working with DTE in, with the intent of, as Nick mentioned, about, once they get the estimate back from a contractor to do the installation, and that tells, that will tell us how much, approximately how much money we would have, or we as a partner would have to purchase the equipment, and that would determine our options, if you will. So, I guess my thought would be, once we have that, bring it back to council, say, here's our options. We have, either we have, this is the only charging station we can choose from and not go over the 12.5, or we have four of them to choose from. You know, what is your pleasure type of thing, is my thought. Unless, Nick, if you have any idea, I mean, that'd be my thought, to bring it back and say, this is what we're proposing, this one has credit card capabilities, this one doesn't, if that were to fit.
Mr. Grossman has a comment?
On page one of the proposed agreement, under overview, third paragraph down, it says, "The company will give the city notice if the installation is expected to exceed $12,500, and the city may decide whether or not to proceed with the project." So, that issue, how much the city's going to become invested, comes up in the agreement itself, and your option is to opt out. If you don't, if it comes in too much over, or any over, you have the option to opt out.
Mr. Campbell?
Thank you, Mr. Mar. Absolutely, and I agree with that. I would just say, based on the fact that we don't know what we're talking about as far as what options we can afford, that's why I would say we'd take it a step further, and before we even get to that 20-day op issue, that I bring it back and say, here's what we have, here's the options of equipment. What do you think?
Ms. Tarr?
Okay, so, I just, I was just trying to make sure that the language in the motion as it exists doesn't tie our hands, and if that's true, I'm fine with it.
I think, based on the opinion of City Manager and City Attorney, it does not. And one final thing to Mr. Long's comment, and I understand his passion and sincerity, and I applaud that, I am very much committed to making sure that there's no additional cost to the taxpayers of Saline. So, I will look forward to seeing a report and a future motion presented by Mr. Campbell and DTE regarding the installation of this charging station. Are there any other comments or discussion items? I will call the question, then. All in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The ayes have it, and the motion carries. Moving on, then.
[inaudible]
Okay. Let me ask a question here, Mr. Campbell. Would we postpone or table discussion or adoption of a user fee until we know exactly what type of equipment we'll be installing? Or what would be your opinion about adopting a user fee this evening?
Sure, and I guess I look a little bit to DTE. I think that might be the rational, the right way to go, because we don't know what equipment we're talking about. I mean, it could be, you know, again, we'll say worst-case scenario, maybe we, again, based on a 12.5 number, we can't fit that particular charger into one of the options unless we are to go over the 12.5, so that we'd have to address that as it came forth. And then, also, remember the potential option, again, potential option, that if we are over a little bit, I don't know what little bit is, but a little bit, and if they have some from a previous project left over, we could potentially utilize that.
Right, and you may want to benchmark against some of the other communities that are looking, you know, to install these, too, to kind of get a range and an understanding of any kind of fee cycle. If you want me to comment further?
I was just going to say exactly what Molly said, is that I would maybe look at other communities and see what, if they're charging, people to charge vehicles. I think it's kind of hard to pick a price at this time, because we don't know how much is going to be, it's going to be used, and...
Right, but...
So, I think it'd probably best, I guess I'm...
Well, right, certainly, but as far as based on the concern, if the council as a whole has a concern of taxpayers, in a sense, subsidizing the use, you know, potentially, the, again, not speaking for the council, they may choose to say, well, we need to, we need to rectify that situation right now, before we were to have data. But we can, yeah, we can certainly, I guess my hope is to work with you, as in DTE, as well as other communities, to help determine what are those other communities doing.
Exactly, and I think you can get a, you can get a range and perspective and structure, you know, again, benchmarking against the other communities.
So, I guess the quick answer would be probably at a later date, once we find out what all the costs are, and what we're looking at.
Right. Probably wouldn't hurt, then, to collect a little data, as it relates to what our competitors or what our neighboring cities and communities are doing relating to user fees. So, I will not ask for a motion unless there's a demand from one of my colleagues. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Campbell, and thank both of you from DTE for coming out this evening. We appreciate that. Moving on to discussion items, commissioning committee reports from council members. Are there any reports this evening? Mr. Long?
Last week, the Celtic Festival Committee met, and further discussed the Celtic Festival that's coming up in July, and a lot of plans, and a lot of things still in motion, so I won't get into specifics. However, one that was brought up was the possibility of creating a, sort of a foundation for the Celtic Festival, they're calling the Friends of the Celtic Festival. I won't say it's very similar to the library situation, but it does play on some of those parameters, if you will. I would much prefer to let the Celtic Festival Committee, or its chairperson, come up when she does, probably next month, to get formal approval from City Council, to say yea or nay to the Celtic Festival, as far as the city's part of funding it next month, and she'll get into that in more detail. But, that's something that they're investigating, that's something that was discussed last week, and they're looking at possibly implementing down the road. So, that's what I have for that. Pam Groschans.
Thank you, Mr. Long. Are there any other commissioner committee reports? I would like to provide a report from the Saline Area Fire Board. We met last Wednesday, and as most of you know, both the mayor and I are representatives on that board, and two important things were discussed, and you will be receiving some forthcoming memorandums from the fire chief relating to their current fiscal year budget, as well as some other financial information. But, the board did approve pay raises for all of the full-time employees of the Saline Area Fire Department, though I should note that those pay raises were offset by savings of higher deductibles and co-pays of all of the employees' health insurance. So, I think the adopted pay raises do not, do not go past, or not more than the projected savings as it relates to healthcare costs. And then, in addition to that, the chief, at our next meeting, will probably propose and recommend the adoption or creation of a subgroup, a subcommittee, to address long-term demands of the fire department, and the possible creation of a new substation in Lodi Township. And there would be a representative of each of the municipalities serviced by the fire department on that subcommittee. The board, for the last 10 years, has really not looked to the future, and it's become cognizant to many of us that we need to do that. So, it was a very, very lively fire board meeting, and also very productive. If there are no other commission or committee reports, are there any other reports or other Ms. Tarr?
I would just note that for those who, like me, were unable to attend the forum on countywide transit that was held here at City Hall, there are a couple more meetings, if anyone is still interested. The one, there are two in, one in Ypsiloe on Wednesday in the morning, one in Ann Arbor at the... at the Mallard Creek branch of the Ann Arbor District Library on Wednesday evening at 6:00, and then next Monday evening at 6:00 at the Mylan Senior Center. So this is an opportunity for those who missed the one in Celine to have, have, an opportunity to provide input and hear from representatives about the master plan. And then another announcement, both of our sister city organizations are currently planning for visits from groups from our sister cities later this year. The Celine Lindenberg Friendship Committee is planning to welcome 30 guests from Lindenberg, Germany, September 19th or 20th for a 10-day visit. And the Celine Brecken Friendship Guild is planning to welcome approximately 20 guests from Brecken from October 11th through the 25th. It will be a busy fall. Both groups would welcome new members and volunteers to help with planning and hosting.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Tahar. Are there any other commissioner, any other reports or announcements from council members? Mr. Campbell?
Thank you, Mr. Mar. Just wanted to, as I mentioned before about the, the mayor mentioned briefly at the last council meeting about possible bike race, a cycling race in Celine. And we met with, the mayor and I met with a couple gentlemen from New York State, as well as a representative from the Ann Arbor Convention and Visitors Bureau last week. And the article that I provided council with is from this magazine, Bicycle, World Racing Bike Magazine, Bicycling, and it says, the tour of the Baton Kill, which is, the Baton Kill is a river in upstate New York, is my understanding. But these gentlemen, that's what they do full-time, is put on these races. And they go, they're, they're working, I believe, their way across the country in establishing these races. They want to have one in the Midwest, which, Ann Arbor, Celine area, there's a strong cycling effort, so that was what helped draw them here. We met with them, they toured around the county, and it's already on the schedule. So it's on their schedule for, I believe it's the weekend of May 13th, which is a Friday, I believe, 13, 14, 15. And what they're, what they're discussing, I say proposing, but that what they're planning on, they've told us, after they went, they came and toured, they were here for a couple, spent a couple days in Washtenaw County, and talking with various folks and groups, and they're planning on it. So what they would, their intent would be, they would do a circuit race with professional racers in Ann Arbor on Friday, the 13th, and possibly have a kids' race too. And then the race here in Celine, actually would start and end in Celine, be a pro-am. Again, still ironing out wrinkles, but what they're proposing would be to start near the Liberty School, Middle School complex, and they would, then they would ride about either 60 or 80-mile race, and then they would probably cross West US 12, maybe potentially in Clinton, there's a light there. They would come along the, from the south, and then finish on the south side of downtown Celine, on Celine Mylan, Celine Mylan, and then where, in parking lot four, where we have our Summer Fest and whatnot, those festivals, they would have what they call their expo, where they would certainly, there would be folks there to help support bikes, you know, vendors, that type of thing, but it's also an opportunity for the community. So I was talking with Art Trapp, Downtown Development Director, Art Trapp, the other day, that I see this potentially, at least in the first year, as kind of like a, maybe a mini Summer Fest. Because that's, that's an opportunity for vendors in the community to sell their wares or provide their service, whatever it might be, games, a kind of a party-type atmosphere. And the way this works, and then, and then I'll back up in a second, but then, then on Sunday, they would have a marathon that would probably start in Ann Arbor, and it would be a 60, 65-mile, but this would be, they would obey the laws of the road, they would stop at intersections, as opposed to the race that would be on Saturday, they would have a lead car and a chase car, and they'd go actually in groups, if you will, and I believe a maximum of 100 bikes per group. And they, that group takes off, and then they wait X amount of time, then they release the next group, and the professionals actually, I can't, I'm not sure how, they, where they, where they lead the bikers off, the professional bikers, but basically, the way it works is that they come, all the amateurs would finish first, and then that's kind of, they build the excitement as the, as the professionals, you know, come across the line. But as far as that rate, it would be a right lane, they would, as you can see, some of the pictures, they're doing both lanes, but this, this particular race, they would not be closing any roads, at least for any length of substantial length of time. They would be on the right side, and they have a rule that if you either, if you cross over the middle lane, the middle, the center lane, or you fall behind the chase car, then you're out of the race, and you have to obey the laws of the road. So that would be interesting, but, but again, they will have volunteers, that's what they call for. They figure, they estimate about 120, 130 volunteers, not just from Celine, but from the Ann Arbor, Celine area, to help staff some of these intersections and whatnot, to help get, to have this event be successful. So they are, they are pushing forward. I know the mayor has spoken to Rotary, to, again, trying to get support as far as for volunteers. Oh, the other thing they talked about is that they also participate in, like a rebate, if you will, if they get a volunteer, a group, an organization, if you will, of 10 or more volunteers volunteering their time, they would get a donation back to that group for helping out. So, but again, it could be very, oh, I guess the other important thing is, they're estimating a first-year race would attract somewhere between 600 and 1,000 racers. And with each racer, based on their past experiences, each racer brings about 2.2 people with them to the race. And so the thought, the intent is they, they'll, it's not, a lot of times you'll see people come before the race and ride, they want to check out the community, they want to check out the course, or they'll come back after the race and do the same. So to me, this could certainly, one of the ongoing goals, initiatives of City Council is to continue to find ways to make Celine a destination place, and this certainly could, if it comes, if it comes to fruition, it could be. And this is, they want to do an annual, they want this to be an annual thing. And this, this tour of the Baton Kill has dealt since 2000, I want to say 2005, 2005, 2007, somewhere in that, that has doubled in size every year. So they have, they have the community that they run this, that they ride in here, conduct this race in. The tour of the Baton Kill is about 1,500 people, and they bring in 3,000-plus racers. So, so very significant, but certainly, we would, there would certainly, we need some coordination with, with our police department and, and their DPW, and of course, I mean, various jurisdictions that they would be riding through, and they, but again, they know all that, we, as Mayor Driscoll mentioned at Rotary, we try to throw all the flags up for them to make sure that they were with eyes wide open, and they feel very confident, that's, again, that's what these guys do, these two gentlemen do for full-time jobs as they are these races, so.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Any questions or comments from Mr. Campbell regarding this report? Well, I know the mayor and I spoke at length about this following last Wednesday's fire board meeting, and she's obviously very excited, very enthusiastic about this. I think if it came to fruition and became an annual thing, it would have a profound economic impact on this community. So I look forward to seeing what progress is made on this between now and our next council meeting. Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Any other reports or announcements? Moving on to public comment then. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make comment or question to City Council. The public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any comments?
My name is Jim Roth, and I just want to report to the council regarding the Culture Arts Committee. The design you looked at and seen the example of has changed. So it's changed to a different pattern, and I'll, council members can have copies. The committee didn't like what they seen, kind of thought looked too much like a swimming pool concept, rather than what really would apply downtown. So this design is not going to have any lettering on it at all. It's going to be using probably earth tones, depending upon what color glass tiles that's available. So it's going to be something, in our next meeting that we have next month, we're going to have a rendering of what that would be. The shape is going to be the same, the height of the, the back of the height is going to be lowered down somewhere between 18 to 20 inches, rather than a three-foot that is was shown there. So I just want to give you an update on it. So I didn't want you to go home thinking what you saw was it. It's changed a lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roth.
Mary Laronas, 373 West Bennett. I would hope the city would not go beyond one electric car charging station, as in, gee, that charging station is nice, let's put in four more. As a taxpayer, I feel the city should no more be involved in providing electricity for electric cars than they should be in providing gasoline for combustion engine cars. Selling electricity should be the business of private enterprise, just as selling gasoline is. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mary.
Mary has two points. In listening, I also agree with Mrs. Laronas, that there were points brought up, that this is a private, basically, enterprise opposed to the city getting involved, and there was excellent amount of input. And another comment I wanted to make, I know we're talking about Winter Fest and Bicycle Fest and Autumn Fest and German Fest, I want to ask about the Celtic Fest. I know last year, there was comments from council that it stopped, you know, it not cost money and end in the green. And apparently, because $20,000 was donated from the Kares Village School to the Celtic Festival, they came and somehow balanced out. I haven't heard of anything, I'd like to know, have they made, did they make any money last year? Because the council said if there was no money made, that they were going to address that. And I think as far as when you talk about the Celine Fair, from when the Celine Fair was there in 1955, when I went to school, and it was uptown, and what it has become, and how they don't bring the tractors anymore into town for the parade, I think the Celtic Festival has also gotten into an area of being reevaluated. It has not made money since, I think, the first two years it made money. And I really think, as a taxpayer, paying to get in, not only to put it on, but paying to participate, opposed to the music downtown, opposed to the Winter Fest that was for everyone, I really would like to know what the, you know, what came out of the expenses and the profit last year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Are there any other citizen comments? Well, with that, I would please, or simply remind everyone to vote next Tuesday, February 22nd. There's a bond extension proposal on the ballot being advanced by the school district, and of course, it is not only your right, but your responsibility to get out and vote. So please, please vote on February 22nd. The polls are open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 in the evening. Very good. All right, we've already excused the absence of Mayor Driscoll, so at this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn at 8:56 p.m.
So moved.
It's been moved by Mr. Girbaugh. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Ivy. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. This meeting is adjourned.